On behalf of the Board of Directors, we welcome you to this meeting. Chairman Timothy J. Sullivan, Vice Chair Ernest Pettiford, Member Janet Trask, Treasurer David Texera, Assistant Treasurer Carol Thomas, or Carol Roberts. The Brockton Housing Authority will meet virtually on Thursday, October 28th, 2021 at 2:00 PM. Due to social distancing guidelines related to COVID-19 state of emergency, this meeting will be held remotely, not at the Brockton Housing Authority's offices. The public is invited to view and or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud Meeting App in any app store or at www.zoom.us. At 2:00 PM on October 28th, 2021, click on and join the meeting, the meeting, and enter meeting ID, ID number 848-5585-0398, passcode 964431, or use the link http://zoom.us. You may also join by calling conference line at 1-646-558-8656 at 2:00 PM on October 28th, 2021 to enter the meeting. Same ID, 848-5585-0398, passcode 964431. Followed by the pound sign. The Board Chair will instruct participants on the appropriate time and manner for public comment during the meeting. I got to read off the Governor Baker's COVID-19. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and state of emergency, on March 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20. Pursuant to the order, public bodies are temporarily relieved from the open meeting laws requirement that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public, so long as measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberations through adequate and alternative means. That letter was updated on April 1st, 2021 and extended to April 1st, 2022. Tom, I got to do the roll call for the forum, and then you can do the regular roll call.
Yes, sir.
Tim Sullivan is here, Ernest Pettiford.
Here.
Janet Trask.
Janet, you're on mute.
Here.
David Texera.
Yeah.
Carol Roberts.
Here.
We have a call. We could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Robert John Mute.
Here.
Commissioner Texera.
Yeah.
Commissioner Trask.
Here.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Here.
And Mr. Chairman.
Here, here. Item two. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 23rd, 2021 as written. Any questions or discussion on the minutes?
I have reviewed them, Mr. Chairman, and found them to be in order. I would recommend that they be accepted as written.
We need a motion from somebody.
Go move.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 23rd, 2021 as written. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands?
Roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Item three, hearing of visitors. Any member of the public is invited to speak before the Board. Visitors wishing to be heard will be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The Board will take any usual under advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for hearing of visitors will be limited to 15 minutes. Is there any hearing of visitors?
If there are any visitors that would like to be heard, please unmute this time, identify yourself, and let the Board know that you'd like, the item you'd like to speak on. I do not see anybody who's expressing interest to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Item four, correspondence. Mr. Tebow.
There is no correspondence this month.
Item five, approval of the bills of the regular meeting of October 28th, 2021. Item B in your packets. Commissioner Texera.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did have a had the review we did, we had a few questions that was asked, and I will make a motion to approve the bill of the regular media of October 28th, 2021 as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner David Texera, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is the approval of the bills of the regular meeting of October 28th, 2021 as written. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item six, review of financial comparative. Item D in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
I'll ask Mr. Patius to give his last report on the finances for the Brockton Housing Authority.
Thank you. So what you have in front of you is the first eight months, or eight months of our fiscal year. Basically, all the programs are running according to what we had forecasted at the beginning of the year. You will notice that the Section 8 has a deficit, but that's only because of CARES Act funding. And once that deficit, once we get to the end of the year, that deficit will actually turn into a small surplus. So the 689 programs are hanging in there as well as the state. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Just one question. Well, I'll ask you a comment, Michael.
Sure.
I hate to see you leave.
Yeah. It's a tough decision, yeah, yeah. It's been a wonderful run here, and Mr. Tebow and Mr. Plouffe have been fantastic. And Brockton Housing Authority is lucky to have leaders like them. So I really appreciate their patience over the years, and I was just glad to have such a good run here for seven years. So thank you very much.
You've got seven years flew right by.
Yeah.
It seems like a year.
Yeah.
Who said it, the days are long and the years are short?
Right.
We need a motion, item six, from anybody?
I'll move.
In a second. From anybody?
In a second bit.
A motion has been made by Commissioner David Texera, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford, to accept the review of financial comparatives as written with one deficit. Any questions? Or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item seven, acceptance of resignation of Michael Patius, Chief Financial Officer. Item D in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
I don't know if you don't accept it, maybe he can't leave. I say that in jest, but Michael has been wonderful to work with. He's been an important part of our team, and we wish him the best. And appreciate everything he's done for the Brockton Housing Authority in the time that we've been here. He will remain a friend of the Brockton Housing Authority. He will, he still lives in East Bridgewater, and he will be working in Medford. So kind of a crazy commute, so we'll see him driving by.
We need a motion, item seven, from anybody?
I make the motion to accept with great regret the resignation of Michael Patius, Chief Financial Officer, effective October 29th, 2021. That's tomorrow.
In a second. Was that a second, David?
Yes, was seconded.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner David Texera. Motion is to accept with regret the resignation of Michael Patius, Chief Financial Officer, effective October 29th, 2021. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Good luck, Michael.
Thank you very much. You've all been wonderful, and Brockton Housing Authority is a great organization to work for.
We've tried, I've tried, Mr. Sullivan, Chairman Sullivan.
Thank you very much, thank you all. It's been wonderful working here.
I've threatened to put roofing nails in front of his tires, so he can't leave.
Brockton's human resources retention policy, huh?
Item eight, approval of fiscal year 21, 2021 state operating budgets. Revision number one, 400-C-689-1, 689-2, and MRVP programs. Item E in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
Well, Mr. Patius's resignation doesn't take effect till tomorrow at 4:30, so I'm going to ask him to speak on this, please.
Thank you. So what you have in front of you is that due to some of the DHCD regulations with regard to how the budgets are set up and how they progress throughout the year, we had to make some changes to line items, moving some things around and so forth, just to satisfy their regulatory requirements. So they're not very big numbers in relation to the total budget itself, but you know, again, it's required by DHCD at this time of year. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, thank you.
We need a motion, item eight. From anybody?
So move.
Yeah. A second.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner David Texera, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion that the proposed operating budget revision number one for state aided housing of the Brockton Housing Authority Program, numbered 400 for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, showing total revenue of $2,503,391 and total expenses of $2,445,646, thereby requesting a subsidy of $1,037,654, and further that the Executive Director's total annual salary of $175,584 for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021 be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval. Any questions on the motion or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera. Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Someone just came on with a phone number, 978, could you mute, please?
Tom.
Yes, sir.
I didn't realize it's three other recommended actions. Do you want me to read those off?
Yes, please.
It's all part of the same motion. Recommended action motion is that the proposed operating budget revision number one for state aided housing of the Brockton Housing Authority Program, numbered 689-1 for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, showing total revenue of $44,340 and total expenses of $55,040, thereby requesting a subsidy of zero, and further that the Executive Director's total annual salary of $175,584 for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021 be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Recommended action, motion that the proposed operating budget revision number one for state aided housing of the Brockton Housing Authority Program, numbered 689-2 for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, showing the total revenue of $27,238 and total expenses of $33,238, thereby requesting a subsidy of zero, and further that the Executive Director's total annual salary of $175,584, no change, for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Motion that the proposed operating budget revision number one for state aided housing of the Brockton Housing Authority Program, numbered MRVP for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, showing total revenue of $146,000 and total expenses of $195,589, thereby requesting a subsidy of zero, and further that the Executive Director's total annual salary of $175,584, zero cents for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask. Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Item nine. A motion carries unanimous. Item nine, approval of resolution number 21-06, resolution approving fiscal year 2021 federal operating budget revision number one, Section 8 Housing Choice Vote Program, Exhibit F in your packets. Mr. Tebow.
Mr. Patius, would you speak on this, please?
Sure. So because we made some changes on to the Section 8 budget with regard to positions and so forth, and it actually affected the state budget. It was proper that we just put this revision through for the Section 8 program, so.
We need a motion. Item nine. From anybody?
Okay. Don't move.
And a second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, Trask, seconded by Commissioner David Texera. Motion is to approve resolution number 21-06, resolution approving fiscal year 2021 operating budget revision number one, Section 8 Housing Choice Vote Program. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item 10, award of contract, protective and social services, Exhibit G in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
I'm excited to get this contract up and going again. Brockton is very unique, the Brockton Housing Authority, and what we're doing with security here, and what we've done in the past. So we have our security actually administered by a social service agency because of two things. One is crime is usually a socioeconomic issue. We have to keep our people safe, and we have to address those issues. But it's also important that we provide programming and supports for our residents so that they don't, so those issues can be addressed. So we did bid this out. We received a response from Family and Community Resources. They are uniquely qualified to do this. They have provided us with this service in the past. So I would make a recommendation that we approve the contract between Family and Community Resources and the Brockton Housing Authority for a five-year period.
So move.
What was that?
So move.
Carol?
Yes.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford. Motion is to approve a contract between Family and Community Resources Incorporated of Brockton, Mass., and the Brockton Housing Authority for a five-year, 60-month agreement beginning November 1st, 2021, and ending October 31st, 2026, for an amount not to exceed $550,000. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Is that the same pretty much as we've always done?
It is, it was what Jack Hill worked under. When Jack Hill passed, we did not renew the contract, so we had to go out and procure it again. So yes, it is. And so, and in the past, they've come in and provided training to our staff, including our maintenance on domestic violence. They have responded during situations where we've had trauma in our places. So again, it provides not only a overall security system, but a social service net.
And has there been any increase in incidents with the pandemic? And from what, everything you read, it's domestic violence is up all over the country.
Domestic violence, we don't usually hear about. It's a hidden thing. That's why we do this with Family Community Resources. They'll come in and establish ways to contact people. Remember, most of the people who are involved with domestic violence, I shouldn't say most, often, the abuser is not supposed to be on the property. So it's hidden from us. We try to set up systems that they can report it other ways without without coming to us, just because that hasn't been very successful. But crime overall is up, violence is up in general.
And do you use the same security group that you do in all the other housing buildings?
We, well, we just renewed that, not renewed it, went out and got a new contract with, I have an invoice here, with Jet Security. They're in all of the elderly high rises.
Okay, and for family and community also, or that's different?
No, that's different. Family and community will provide a coordinator who will work with the police, will work with the asset managers, the service coordinators, and all other social service providers.
Any more questions or discussion? Item 11. We need a motion and a second.
So move on that item.
In a second.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to award a three-year contract in the amount not to exceed $150,000.
$550,000. Well, I think Commissioner Sullivan.
I'm on the wrong one. Okay. That was the wrong one. Motion to approve contract between Family and Community Resources Incorporated of Brockton, Mass. and the Brockton Housing Authority for a five-year, 60-month agreement beginning November 1st, 2021, and ending October 31st, 2026, for an amount not to exceed $550,000. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Award of contract, on-call tree trimming and removal services, Exhibit H in your packets. Mr. Tebow.
Never has there been a more timely procurement. Mr. Christopher, could you speak on this, please?
Afternoon, everyone. This is, this contract is for on-call tree trimming and removal. On September 27th, 2021, the Brockton Housing Authority advertised for qualified tree trimming and removal contractors for work that cannot be performed by current staff. This work was to be awarded to two responsive and responsible bidders that met the qualifications set in the bid packet. This is a three-year contract not to exceed $150,000 over the duration of the contract. On October 13th, 2021, the submission deadline, we received one bid as reflected in the bid tally sheet. The low and responsive, only responsive bidder was Northeastern Tree Service of Rhode Island. Bids were advertised in Central Register, Conbuys, and the Enterprise. Three companies received bid packs, and one bid was submitted, and that was Northeastern Tree Service of Rhode Island. I recommend a motion be made to award the contract in the amount not to exceed $150,000 to Northeastern Tree Service of Cranston, Rhode Island.
We need a motion and a second from anybody?
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to award a three-year contract in the amount not to exceed $150,000 to Northeastern Tree Service of Cranston, Rhode Island for on-call tree trimming and removal services, which, by the way, was a little bit. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Is it harder to get people in this business? It seems like it.
I'm just surprised we didn't get, have more people bid on it. I don't know what the reason is, but.
They're extremely busy, extremely busy at all times, so.
Especially after yesterday.
I can say one thing with this company, because they were on a, they were our contract, the previous contract. I called them yesterday morning at 7:30 for that tree that went through the roof at Golden Circle, and they were on site within an hour and a half in Rhode Island. So, and they got the tree out of the roof. And that, so they were very responsive.
Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item 12, award of contracts, snow removal services, affordable housing properties, Exhibit I in your packets. Mr. Tebow.
Can I ask Mr. Plouffe to speak on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Tebow, members of the board. We needed to go out for affordable housing, snow removal for our 50 scattered site properties as the last contract had expired. We published in the Enterprise and the Central Register and Conbuys. We had four pickup proposals, SSE Landscape, JS Landscape, BM Lawns, and Fairway Lawn and Care. The only one to submit a proposal was Fairway Lawn. The evaluation criteria is. The evaluation criteria is included in my memo, plus their pricing, and I'm asking that the board authorize the executive director to enter into a three-year contract for snow removal for the affordable housing sites with Fairway Lawn Care effective November first.
Need a motion and a second?
Second.
Was that the motion, Ernie, or a second?
I made a motion, I'm sorry.
Second.
In a second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pedefit, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to authorize Thomas G. Tebow as the executive director to enter into a three-year contract with Fairway Lawn Care Corporation, DBA Fairway Landscaping for snow removal services for the affordable housing properties effective November one, 2021. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Tim, I didn't second that. It was Janet.
Oh, sorry. The motion was made by Commissioner Ernest Pedefit, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Any questions on the motion or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Item thirteen. Appointment of Director of Asset Management, exhibit J in your packets. Mr. Tebow.
Before I ask Mr. Pluff to speak on this, this position is extremely important to the future of the Brockton Housing Authority. Now, we have had property managers for years, and property managers are the people who do the lease enforcement, rent collection, leasing up of the units, or overall security, interaction with the residents. An asset manager or a director of asset manager is looking at where the properties stand today, where they'll stand tomorrow, how to make sure that we're getting the proper finances for this. And as we move forward into the new financing of our sites, this person will be extremely important in the success of those programs. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Pluff now to speak about the process, and then I'll have a word or two to say afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow, members of the board. We advertised and posted internally. We advertised with the Enterprise online in the Mass Narrow page that they have for classifieds that are read by all Housing Authority personnel throughout the state, the Taunton Gazette, Patriot Ledger, looking for a Director of Asset Management. And this position's been vacant for a while. The screening committee of Mr. Tebow and myself reviewed the resumes and cover letters of the six applicants we received. We decided to interview five. One withdrew. We interviewed the other four. We brought two back for a second interview. And after that, we agreed that Mr. Sheedy was the superior candidate for the job. Mr. Sheedy's been in the affordable public housing management arena. Or I won't say management. Started out as a maintenance man, then became a maintenance supervisor, so he has experience on that side of the house. Then became the property manager at Hamilton, Wade, and Douglas. There, he did the whole shop. Did the hiring, did the procurement, did the firing. Was in charge of maintenance, was in charge of modernization, was in charge of writing grants, was in charge of procurement. He was there when, working with the city, we tore down all those dilapidated buildings on Spring Street and made that beautiful park that's there at Hamilton, Wade, working with the city. And then he came to the Brockton Housing Authority in 2014. Since coming to the housing authorities, moved up from an asset manager two to an asset manager one to a regional asset manager, where he is responsible for a number of units and the development here in Brockton, plus the Abington Housing Authority. And I forgot to say, while Mr. Sheedy was working at Hamilton, Wade and Douglas, he went back to school nights, got his bachelor's degree from Stonehill. So he has lots of experience doing this type of work, supervising people. And I, for one, am excited that he'll be taking over this role to lead our team of asset managers, family self-sufficiency, security, and resident service coordinators. It's a big job.
And as I said, it's a big and important job to the future. I have spoken heart-to-heart with Mr. Sheedy about this, about how big the job is and our expectations of it, and I believe that he can meet that criteria. So I concur with Mr. Pluff.
Just one question, Tom Pluff.
Yes.
You mentioned self-sufficiency coordinator.
That's coming up, but this person would supervise the self-sufficiency coordinator.
Okay. We need a motion, item thirteen.
So.
Second.
Was that you, David?
Yes, sir.
And Carol?
Yeah.
A motion has been made by Commissioner David Texera, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to appoint Dennis Sheedy of Eastern Mass to the position of a Director of Asset Management at the annual salary of $102,000 effective November first, 2021. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Very impressive resume, Dennis.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Welcome aboard. I know you've already been here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Where will, where will your office be, Dennis? You can't take them away.
I didn't mention that, that the commissioner, he was the manager in her building for a number of years now.
So now where?
That's to be decided, Commissioner Trask. I would like him to be out in the region. I don't want him to be at Goddard Road and stuck as part of downtown. I want him out in the field with the other departments that are working in the field, so we're going to find him a spot.
Dennis, let me read this off to you. I know you've already been here for a while, but I read it off to everybody who comes in or for motion. Keep in mind that anyone can have a bad day. If someone jumps on your throat, just walk away. Remember, without them, we don't need you, or they don't need me. They are number one. Welcome aboard, Dennis.
Thank you.
No, we're going to shake your hand. We can't.
Dennis, I don't know if you know what you got yourself into.
I'm about to find out.
About to find out, but there's a lot of exciting things happening. Dennis is an important, this position is an important part of that, and I'm sure he'll grow into that responsibility, as is so many other here, so many other people here at the authority. So thank you very much for the support of the board.
Item fourteen. Appointment of family self-sufficiency coordinator, exhibit K in your packets. Mr. Tebow.
Well, I'm going to say something before Mr. Pluff this time. I'd probably say all the good stuff, but I've worked with Ms. Milne since she started here. She started as a receptionist at the authority. She then went over to Bel Air and was a clerk over there working with the residents and did a fabulous job there. She has a background in credit counseling and has brought that along, and has been great working with our residents all along the way. She's assisted Ms. McDonough over the last seven or eight years. I don't know exactly. I'm sure I could look it up, Linda, but and done a great job there. During her interview, she was fabulous. She understands what we want to do and how we want to support people. And she knows the people. She comes from the heart when she's dealing with them, but she's got a very rational mind also, so she knows the numbers. So I'm happy to be involved in recommending her for this position. Sorry, Mr. Pluff, I'll let you say something.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow, members of the board. We did, besides posting internally for this position, we advertised in the Taunton Gazette, Patriot Ledger, and online. Ten resumes were received, and even after reviewing the resumes and cover letters, Mr. Tebow and I, in interviewing four candidates, it was clear that Linda was tops. I was saying to somebody today, we're having this electricity emergency that early on in my career here at the Housing Authority, there was a fire at Bel Air. It was a late Friday afternoon, and I was the only one around. Richard was gone, and Mr. Tebow was down the Cape for his yearly vacation, and Linda knew every person. She knew where they were. If somebody wasn't in their apartment and we were looking for them because their apartment was being flooded, she said, "Oh, I know. They hang out with Mrs. Jones in 704." Do you remember this, Linda? We'd go and find Mrs. Jones, and she'd come back to her apartment. It was great. It was unbelievable. She knew every person at that development, knew their friends and their habits, and and she's taken that right over to family self-sufficiency. And she treats each one of the people that are in that program very well and helps them to succeed.
We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Who made that second, Ernie? No. Dave? Who made the motion?
It was.
I can't, it's hard to tell on this.
I believe Carol Roberts made the motion, and Commissioner Dex, Texera made the second.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner David Texera. Motion to appoint Linda Milney of Brockton, Mass. To the position of family self-sufficiency coordinator at the 2021 Step One rate of $59,823 per annum effective November first, 2021. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
I just want to say, Linda, it looks like you've taken advantage of every possible course and and certificate that you possibly could, and it's very admirable. You've been all over the place, Madison, Wisconsin, and Orange County, and everywhere. And also, you have tough shoes to fill with Cynthia, but I know you're a real people's person, just like Cynthia was, and we know that the housing authority is in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to say thank you, and I look forward to working with everyone and continuing a successful family self-sufficiency program moving forward. I know I have big shoes to fill, but I'm ready for it.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Item fourteen. A roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Linda, let me read off the same thing I read off to everybody. Keep in, I know you've been here before. Keep in mind that anyone can have a bad day. If someone jumps on your throat, please just walk away. Don't argue with them. Remember that without them, we don't need you. Or they don't need me. They are number one. Welcome aboard. Normally, we'd shake your hand.
Thank you.
We can't do it.
There we go.
Item fifteen. Appointment of maintenance officer, exhibit L in your packets. Mr. Tebow.
So we are putting forth the name of Bernice Cadjigas. Bernice actually was with us back before I came to the Housing Authority. She then decided to leave and went south, and then, like most people, came back, said, you know, New England's the best place to be. She is, had worked in the maintenance department for a number of years now. She does a fabulous job with our residents. I hear her on the phone, but I often see her down just talking to the residents in the community room here, or in the resident room, or out front, when they have a question or a concern, or they just need someone to talk to. She does a great job with that. She's worked very closely with Mr. DeChristopher, and I think she will do great in this new position. So, Mr. Pluff, I don't know if you have anything to add, or Mr. DeChristopher?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tebow, members of the board. This position has been vacant since Linda Napoli left us a number of years ago. And during that period, I would say the only constant in the maintenance department was Bernice. There was a lot of coming and going, and she held that department together. So in that, in the meantime, there was a new director, a new office manager, a new clerk, and now we have a new maintenance officer aid proposed to the board. Bernice has worked down in the maintenance department since 2014, as Mr. Tebow said in this go-around. Works great with our residents, knows our HAB system and work order system very well. Took it upon herself to be the person responsible to call out our maintenance men for snowplow duties. And so we can't more highly recommend Ms. Cadjigas for this position.
We need a motion and a second. Item fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to appoint Bernice Cadjigas of Fall River, Mass. To the position of maintenance officer aid at the 2021 Step One rate of $49,065 per annum effective November first, 2021. Did I get that name right? Cadjigas?
It's Cajigas.
Cajigas. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous.
That's a tough job. I'm sure you're up for it.
Yeah, I am.
Bernice, I'll be real quick with you. Just keep in mind that our tenant's a number one.
Always.
We need them.
Yes.
Without them, they don't need us.
That's true.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Carol's clapping.
Yes, I'm clapping. You're right.
Thank you.
Item sixteen. Appointment of maintenance working foreman, exhibit M in your packets. Mr. Tebow.
Over the last couple of days, I've witnessed, and I've seen this for years, but in the storms, it always comes out that the maintenance department goes out and they put together a team, and it's almost like going in the battle, and I saw that yesterday. Mr. DeChristopher has put together a great team. They're working as a team to serve our residents. They've knocked the the work orders way down. They have taken care of the turnaround units and all sorts of special projects. And in doing that, Mr. DeChristopher has relied on some of his senior staff. And the people we're putting forward are two people who, regardless of position, have been integral in getting what we need done, done in a timely manner. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pluff and Mr. DeChristopher.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. In June, we posted internally to fill a position of maintenance working foreman. We received eight resumes. Committee of Mr. DeChristopher, Mr. Tebow, and myself decided to interview all the candidates. They were all internal candidates. They were all internal candidates. One candidate decided to withdraw. After the interviews, we brought four back for a second interview. After the second interview, there was a multiple choice test that Mr. DeChristopher put together based upon common maintenance scenarios. It was a multiple choice test. After the interviews and scoring the results, we reached consensus. And Mr. DeChristopher is very high on Mr. Demoles, who leads his vacancy preparation crew. Mr. Demoles is an assistant foreman now. He was hired in 2002. He's a Marine Corps veteran. And as the leader of the vacancy and special projects crew, he's the leader of the team that Mr. DeChristopher, I'll let him talk about it, but he'll call and say, hey, we need this done. Can you get this done? And Bob always gets it done. So I'll let Mr. DeChristopher talk about that.
I've worked for Bob for many years and he's one of the most reliable people I've worked with. He's always there when you need him. He's done multiple jobs for us, like special projects and the vacancy crew. We work well together and I'm looking forward to it.
We need a motion, item 16.
So move.
From anybody?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner David Texera. Motion is to appoint Robert Demoles of Westbridge Auto, Mass. To the position of Maintenance Working Foreman at the 2021 Step One Rate of $40.36 per hour effective November 1st, 2021. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
We love veterans.
Just one, Tom. The camera is so far back, you can't even see them. I can barely, I can barely see the two people.
We didn't want to.
He said he didn't want to break the camera.
It worked. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous.
They look like they're in court.
I'm just going to read off the same thing to everybody else. I know you've already been here, but keep in mind that anyone can have a bad day. If somebody jumps on your throat, please just walk away. Remember that without them, they don't need you or me. Welcome aboard, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Item 17. Appointment of Maintenance Working Foreman, Exhibit N in your packets. Mr. Tebow.
I've said what I said before about both gentlemen, so I'll turn it right over to Mr. Plouffe and maybe you'll comment after that.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow, members of the board. During the same process that we used to fill the last position, we were looking for a second Maintenance Working Foreman. Again, Mr. Carbonaro was one of the ones we brought back for a second interview and given the opportunity to take the multiple choice test. Mr. Carbonaro has several licenses and certificates that the Housing Authority uses, including his CDL license and his hoisting license, where he is our heavy equipment operator that we use here at the Housing Authority. He's a lead mechanic. He's stationed right now on the state side at Crosby Gardens, which always has a very, very low amount of outstanding work orders. Whenever we have meetings with the asset managers, his managers rave about the work he does. And I will, I have attached his resume for your review. And Mr. DeChristopher, if you'd like to add anything.
Sure. Thank you. Just like Tom, like Bob, I've worked with Tommy for many years. And the three of us have always worked together as a, very well together, organized. Tommy's really a good worker, always willing to learn. He hosts a ton of talent and I think in this position, he's gonna, him and Bob are gonna do fabulous. And it will be a great asset to the maintenance staff.
So watch out, they're all buddies, the three of them.
I have to give Mr. DeChristopher some credit there. He can be a colleague at one moment and a boss the next, so he understands the responsibility. And for Mr. Carbonaro, I get just great reports back from the residents at Washburn Heights, Crosby Gardens and over at the Ann Ward House. So it's very important, I know it's very important to you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Carbonaro has taken it very seriously in his assignment there.
And you built the library at Campello High Rise?
Yes.
That's, that's very commendable.
We need a motion and a second from anybody?
So move, please.
And a second?
Second.
Was that Carol? The second?
Who got in there before me?
I don't know.
Okay, yeah.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pedefit, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts, motion to appoint Thomas Carbonaro of Westway, Mass. To the position of Maintenance Working Foreman at the 2021 Step One Rate of $40.36 per hour, 36 cents per hour, effective November 1st, 2021. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Hang on one second.
This is probably a good part of Zoom. You get to see the people's pets here.
The boss was speaking.
I saw something on the internet the other day, a Zoom bingo card. And one of the boxes was, you know, get to see family members or pets of somebody. So we could cross that one off.
I'm back. That's a brand new dog, Tom. I don't know why she's barking.
Oh, it's a puppy?
It's not, it's a puppy to us, Janet. It was one of the Sully and Kelly's puppies from nine years ago.
Oh.
We got it back.
Ah, nice.
Item 18.
I don't know if you wanted to say anything to Mr. Carbonaro. We just, is he still there? Oh, I'm sorry. They're moving around.
Tommy, you're so small, we can't even see you. Keep in mind that anyone can have a bad day. If somebody jumps on your throat, just please walk away. Remember that without them, as residents, we don't need any maintenance man. They don't need me. Would you keep that in mind?
Yes.
Welcome aboard, Tommy.
Thank you.
Item 18. Approval of Certificate of Final Completion Boiler and Domestic Hot Water Replacement Ann Ward Congressional House Project 667-5. Exhibit L in your packets. Mr. Tebow.
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. On the 29th, June 29th, CA Crowley Engineering, the engineer firm representing the authority, Dean Gilion Plumbing and Heating Services, the prime contractor performing the boiler and domestic hot water replacement at 667-5 Ann Ward House to be complete as per the plans and specifications that were dated November 21st, 2020. All required documents, warranties and aspils have been received. We would recommend to accept the final completion as of June 29th, 2021 from Gilion Plumbing and Heating Services Incorporated of 31 Staff Road, Saugus, Mass. For CAP hub number 0440914667-5 Ann Ward House Boiler and Domestic Hot Water Replacement.
We need a motion and a second from anybody?
So move.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner David Texera, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve the Certificate of Final Completion effective June 29th, 2021 to the contract with Gilion Plumbing and Heating Services Incorporated of Saugus, Mass. For the Boiler and Domestic Hot Water Replacement Project at the Ann Ward Congressional House Project 667-5. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Item 19. A motion carries unanimous. Item 19. Approval of Change Order Number Two, HVAC Improvement and Roof Replacement, Richard J. Surgi Building, Administration Building, Exhibit P in your packet.
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. This change order number two is for the deletion of occupancy centers for the fan cooled units in the lower level at the bank building. We would recommend to delete the occupancy centers at this time due to low volume of activity in the lower level. We would recommend to approve the change order in the amount of $685.26, a deletion of $685.26 to Apex Corp. of 56 Charles Street, Abington, Mass. At the Richard J. Surgi Administration Building.
Need a motion and a second from anybody?
So move. Second it for Jen.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion to approve change order number two in the amount of minus $685.26 to the contract with Apex Corporation of Abington, Mass. For HVAC improvements and roof replacement at the Richard J. Surgi Administration Building. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Was that a question, Tom, that I didn't get it?
No, no questions.
Hearing none. Motion carries unanimous. Our roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Item 20. Approval of Certificate of Completion Consolidated and Certificate of Release, HVAC Improvements and Roof Replacement, Richard J. Surgi Administration Building, Exhibit Q in your packets. Mr. Tebow.
Again, if I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this?
Tebow, McKenna, McKenna and Taylor, the firm representing the authority has deemed Apex Corp. of 56 Charles Street in Abington, Mass. To be complete as of September 30th, 2021 at the Richard J. Surgi Administration Building for the HVAC Improvements and Roof Replacement Project as per the plans and specifications. McKenna, McKenna and Taylor has also confirmed that the construction work meets all applicable codes and that Apex Corp. has completed all punchless items. We would recommend to approve the Certificate of Completion Consolidated and a Certificate of Release for the HVAC Improvements and Roof Replacement Project at the Richard J. Surgi Building, Administration Building, sorry.
We need a motion and a second?
So move.
Who moved that? It's hard to hear on this computer. I got the, Ernie Pedefit second?
Dave, Dave moved it.
And then Ernie.
I got that. A motion has been made by David Texera, seconded by Ernest Pedefit. Motion is to approve change order number two in the amount of that's the wrong one. We already did that one. The motion is to approve the Certificate of Completion Consolidated and Certificate of Release effective September 30th, 2021 to the contract with Apex Corporation of Abington, Mass. For the HVAC Improvement and Roof Replacement at the Richard J. Surgi Administration Building. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item 21. Award of Contract Architectural and Engineering Design Services Modernization of Units, Campello High Rise, Section 18, Exhibit I in your packets.
Well, this is a very exciting item. As you know, we have applied for and received approval of a Section 18 demolition disposition application for the Campello High Rise. The next step in that process, and we have a number of people here from this contractor, is to put together some plans that address the issues and then we bring them to market for financing. So we, I'll let Mr. Barry speak on the process. We think we have a top notch. It's two firms that have put together a proposal for us. Deets and Company and BWA Architects for the design of the work that will be done at the Campello High Rise. A very creative group, very experienced group. And we look forward to moving forward on this. Mr. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. In front, in response to the capital improvements request or proposal for Architectural, Engineer and Design Services dated on July 28th, 2021, the authority received three qualified proposals. This RFP is for the design services for the construction or conversion of Campello High Rise Development from public housing to Section 18 housing. The selection committee of Thomas Tebow, Thomas Plouffe, Nancy Macedo, Tim Smith and myself examined and ranked the three proposals based on their demonstrated experience in similar public housing projects. Staff capabilities and the ability of the three firms were interviewed by the selection committee. After all the proposals were ranked, references, checks and interviews complete, the selection committee unanimously selected Deets and Company Architects and Associated BWA Architecture as the most advantageous to the Brockton Housing Authority. We would recommend a motion to award a contract in a not to exceed amount of $6,193,000 to Deets and Company Architects and slash BWA Architecture for Design Services for the modernization of the Campello High Rise Apartments, Section 18.
We need a motion and a second from somebody?
So move.
And a second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner David Texera. Motion to award a contract in a not to exceed amount of $6,193,000 to Deets and Company Architects, BWA Architecture for Design Services for the modernization of Campello High Rise Apartments, Section 18. Any discussion or questions on the motion?
Where is Matter Hunt? The school?
Tom, you're on mute. Did you get that?
I apologize. Does anybody from Deets or from BTA want to answer that question? We do have representatives here. No, well, get someone here. Carrie Deets.
Yeah, hi. Could you repeat the question, please?
Where is Matter Hunt?
I have no idea. Can you tell me what that's in reference to? I don't know my geography very well, clearly.
Oh, everything else seems to be kind of local and that's not familiar. That's why I asked.
So could you tell, Ms. Deets, could you tell us a little bit about your firm? Tell the board a little bit about. Tell the board a little bit about your firm?
Sure. We are 29 people. And we have, over half of us are registered architects. So we're really, really strong. We've been doing affordable housing since 1984. So we've got tons and tons of experience on this. We teamed with BWA because they, like us, have an incredible amount of experience in doing this work. It's, it's, you know, this is the kind of thing we love to do and we've been doing a lot of work for the Cambridge Housing Authority. So we've got, you know, tons of experience, especially in high rise. So we're very excited about this. So Matter Hunt must be one of the consultants. So I don't have the proposal open in front of me. I apologize. Maybe, maybe the commissioner can tell me which consultant you're looking out to come up with Matter Hunt?
It looks like a school.
Huh, okay.
Very attractive school.
Okay, that, hmm. I can't answer that question, sorry.
No problem.
Beyond my, beyond my ability, thank you.
Building, it was your building envelope, so it's probably one of your subcontractors.
Ah, okay, so it's probably one of Gail consultant's projects, yeah.
Yeah, Matter Hunt Elementary School.
Don't know. I'd have to look it up on Google Maps, just like all of you.
Manahut Elementary School, the one they redid? Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
It's located in Manapan, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts.
No problem.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I actually suggest? And I know that it's probably out of bounds for me to do this, but the contract is actually just with us. The BW is actually a consultant to us. We're the prime on this. Yep. So that may change your motion a little bit.
Yes, if that, if, if the, if they are a subcontractor with you, so if BTA does not perform, we'll be talking to you.
For sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Right, okay, no, that, that's appropriate. So if we could amend the motion to just eliminate the reference to BWA.
Thank you.
For the record, item twenty-one has been amended. So we, we have to withdraw the, the, the motion in the second for the first one. Carol, you, you made the motion? You got to withdraw it?
I have to, oh, withdraw, okay.
Yep. David, you have to withdraw yours.
He's muted.
Muted, David.
Yes.
New motion is to award a contract in a not to exceed amount of $6,193,000 to Dietz and Company Architects for modernization of Campello High Rise Apartments, Section 18. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Carrie, I just have one. Where are you located? Where are you?
Springfield, Massachusetts, sitting at my desk.
Okay. Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trast.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous.
So just before you end, thank you very much. We're really looking forward to this and we're, we're ready to kick it off at any time. So be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Item twenty-two. Executive Director Report, Exhibit S in your packet. Mr. Tebow.
So I, I won't speak to the things that I have on the written report. You have that. If you have any questions, please ask. I'll give you an update on what's happened since the storm occurred. We, given the nature of the storm, we have relatively little damage. As Mr. DeChristopher said, we had a huge tree, huge tree fall on an apartment at Golden Circle. It did pierce the ceiling, the roof and the ceiling of the apartment. It's still habitable. Mr. DeChristopher, along with the tree company and his staff, cut that off. They've also run around the city like madmen with the dump truck, cleaning everything up. We are still on the west side of the city, Earl Street, Richmond Street, Kennedy Drive, Bel Air High Rise and Sullivan Towers. We are without power. We have contacted National Grid in multiple ways, using our elected officials also to prioritize that. They have stated that they have brought the hospital back, Good Samaritan, which was out right up until about an hour ago. And now they're working over in that area. So hopefully they'll have that on this, this evening. We do have staff who are in the buildings. They're going floor to floor, contacting people just to see if they, they need anything. Thank God it's not too cold. We do have some, what I call hot, generators have hot plugs. So we've, you know, people are using those to charge up their devices. We've put bars in there, you know, outlet bars so that they could have multiple plugs. So that, that's working out. As far as I know, as of right now, nobody has been harmed or injured. Oxygen is an issue and, but the managers and the service coordinators are working with those items also. So supposed to rain on Saturday, that's not good. But we've made it, made it this far. It seems to be, well, it was a good test of the systems in the city. And Carol's never lost her, her power.
Nope.
Thank God.
Flicked it, but not lost.
We need a motion, item twenty-two, in a second.
So move. Second.
A motion's been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trast. Motion is to accept the executive director's report and put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Who's the artist that will be working at Kennedy Drive?
Oh, you have to ask me that question, don't you? I have it in my, my file. It's the artist that we spoke of.
Oh, good, good.
From the Y.
I didn't know if you had to go outside to, outside of Brockton.
Yeah, unfortunately, that, that program is unique. And I, so a lot of the stuff that we're doing there, they, when we ask questions, we don't get answers because it's, it's not just an in the box type program.
Yeah. So it's staying local.
It's staying local, yes.
Good, good.
Item twenty-three. Old business. Did you do a roll call on that?
I'm sorry, no, I did not, on the acceptance of the executive director's report.
Yeah, item twenty-two.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trast.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item twenty-three. Old business.
None.
Any old business? Hearing none. Item twenty-four. New business. I have one item, Tom, just wanted to mention the meeting is November 18th, the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Any other new business? Hearing none. Item twenty-five.
No holiday party, correct?
No holiday party.
Okay. Too bad.
Yeah, so good.
Holiday.
We need a motion, item twenty-five. Don't run off yet. You got to do a roll call.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes. In a second, in a second. A motion's been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford. This meeting is adjourned. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Texera.
Yes.
Commissioner Trast.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Stay safe.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.